I call back in the session, the Board of Supervisors meeting for April 11, 2017. And this is the afternoon session. We had quite a lengthy morning session and got a couple of items of good substance this afternoon as well. And before we get started, just would note that if you wish to address any item on the agenda, either published items or items not on the agenda, ask you fill out a speaker identification form and make sure you get it to Flo Evans, our clerk, and she'll get it to me. We'll call upon you at the appropriate time. And so with that being said, and getting started with the afternoon session, Flo, call the roll if you would please to establish a quorum.
Yes, good afternoon. Supervisor Serna, Kennedy.
Here.
Peters, Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thanks. I just would know for the record, too, in the event that you weren't here this morning, some of you weren't, Supervisor Serna is out of town today, so we're operating with four board members. And I understand that Supervisor Peters will probably join us later this afternoon for the next item. So we've got a quorum, though, and we can press forward with the action at hand. And with that, go ahead and call the first item, and we'll get started.
Okay. Item 71 is the public hearing to consider adopting a resolution accepting groundwater sustainability agency responsibility for sub-basin areas within Sacramento County remaining unmanaged on June 30, 2017.
Okay, good. Thanks, Flo. Carrie Schmitz, you're up.
Hello. Good afternoon.
Good morning.
I'm waiting for my board presentation. Good afternoon, Chair Natoli and members of the board. Carrie Schmitz, I'm with the Department of Water Resources. Today, I'm returning to your board as a follow-up to our March 1 presentation on the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. I'm asking that your board conduct a public hearing and consider authorizing staff to take the necessary actions to accept groundwater sustainability agency, or GSA, management responsibilities for those areas in the county that remain unmanaged on June 30, 2017. So before I ask that your board open the public hearing, I'll quickly review some of the information provided at the March 1 board workshop. SIGMA was passed in 2014 and became effective in January of 2015. SIGMA requires that all areas within California sub-basins are managed by GSAs by June 30, 2017. Areas that are unmanaged after this date are subject to state intervention, which includes extraction reporting and associated fees. Counties can accept GSA responsibility for areas within the county that are otherwise unmanaged. So as we've discussed before, there are four groundwater sub-basins in Sacramento County. The North American Basin is north of the American River and includes parts of Placer and Sutter County. The South American Sub Basin is between the American and Casumnes Rivers and is wholly within Sacramento County. The Casumnes Sub Basin is south of the Casumnes River and includes a portion of Amador County. And the Solano Sub Basin includes the delta portion of Sacramento County. So this slide shows the proposed and exclusive GSAs in Sacramento County at this time. Sacramento Groundwater Authority, or SGA, is the exclusive GSA over the North American Sub Basin. Sacramento Central Groundwater Authority is the exclusive GSA over the majority of the South American Sub Basin, with the exception of the Slough House Resource Conservation District and Omo-Chumney-Hartnell Water District overlap areas, and the area to the west, roughly to the west of Interstate 5, which is currently unmanaged. The Casumnes Sub Basin so far has three exclusive GSAs: Omo-Chumney-Hartnell, Slough House Resource Conservation District, and Galt Irrigation District are all exclusive at this time. City of Galt and Clay Water District are in the process of becoming GSAs. And in Solano, in the Solano Sub Basin, there are no GSAs in the Sacramento County portion of this basin at this time. So this slide shows the three large unmanaged areas in Sacramento County currently. There are unmanaged areas in three out of the four sub-basins in the county: the Solano, the Casumnes, and the South American Sub Basins. In the following slides, I'll talk more specifically about each area and the outreach that staff has done in these areas to date. So in the Solano Sub Basin, staff has been working with Resource Conservation District representatives, as well as stakeholders from Solano County. RCD representatives have expressed a desire to have a role in groundwater management, but are not in a position currently to form GSAs. They would like to work with county staff moving forward with a vision of forming their own GSA or GSAs in the future. RCD representatives have expressed support for the county's involvement while they determine their future management role. In the unmanaged area of the South American Sub Basin, county staff have worked with Resources Conservation District representatives who are interested in groundwater management. You can see there are a number of RCDs in this area. They, too, support the county's involvement while they determine the appropriate management structure. So far, no eligible entities have expressed interest in becoming a GSA in the unmanaged portion of the Casumnes Sub Basin. On March 15, the Water Forum hosted an outreach event for stakeholders in this area to receive input from residents on SIGMA. Attendees expressed concern over the impending June 30, 2017 deadline, and they expressed concern with county involvement, but also expressed a strong desire to avoid state intervention. A summary of the stakeholder input received at the meeting has been distributed to the attendees, and you each have received a copy of that document. County staff, in collaboration with the Water Forum, will continue the dialogue with these stakeholders moving forward, and will continue the dialogue with each of the sub-basins as we move forward towards June 30.
Carrie, can I ask if we leave that slide in the kind of the lower right-hand portion? You saw the City of Galt presumed GSA, but there are some pockets there, and particularly the one in the southern portion of Galt there, as you, between city limits and the Sacramento-Sacramento County line.
Right.
I know some of those folks were present at the meeting, the community meeting that was held middle part of last month. And so by making that particular designation there, I mean, that's an unincorporated area pocket. It's not just...
Right. That's correct.
And some of those folks, again, have long expressed a desire to remain in the unincorporated area and have had interactions with the City of Galt on land use matters and annexations. And I think have been very clear about, at least, the perspective of a majority of those residents in that area, which doesn't have, you know, a large number of people there. But so how do we presume the City of Galt? Because there has been some difference of opinion on land use matters, and I think they were there representing folks who were on wells and obviously have an interest in this matter. And I know, actually, as I mentioned to you before the meeting, received a call from one of the parties who, you know, was contemplating attending today and may be in attendance. But I think that presumption, for us to even say that at this point in time, if that's what that arrow is pointing to, I don't know that it is. Maybe it's just kind of the directional modality of your arrows.
The directional.
Okay, so is that...
Those areas are still in the unincorporated counties, so they would be in the county GSA.
Right. And not presumed to be in the Galt GSA. Galt could apply, and that would be taken into consideration. But right now, they're going to be in this actions before us. They're in... Okay, I just want to be clear about that. So nothing that changed.
Yeah, sorry for the confusion.
That's right. It's not. I just, looking at the diagram there, was what kind of led me to the question. So, okay, thanks.
Right. So today, we're asking your board to hold a public hearing and consider accepting GSA responsibility for unmanaged areas in the county. Today's action will authorize staff to take the necessary actions to accept GSA management responsibility for any areas in the county that remain unmanaged on June 30. County will withdraw or amend their application if another eligible entity expresses interest or submits to become a GSA in the county's management area. And the County Board of Supervisors will act as interim governance body until a different governance body is established. And as we talked about in March, this action will help avoid state intervention, which includes extraction reporting and associated fees. And it will also allow time for us to work with eligible entities to eventually assume governance responsibilities. So at this time, I ask your board to open the public hearing, consider any public testimony, close the public hearing, and adopt the resolution accepting GSA management responsibility for these areas. This meeting has been noticed as required by SIGMA. In addition, the hearing announcement was distributed to those on the email distribution list for each of the groundwater sub-basin groups. And the hearing was disclosed at relevant groundwater meetings as well. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you, Carrie. Any questions by my colleagues on this? Okay, you did a very thorough job in covering it, and I want to thank you for certainly your work in this area, and certainly many of the folks in the audience, and some that aren't able to join with us. I've been in attendance at meetings of the board, but certainly in community meetings, and I think have been a part of a very important conversation, but certainly very important work that hopefully will lend itself to the local management and oversight and responsibility. And I guess I would just characterize this somewhat like I was characterized in the meeting we had a few weeks ago with landowners and other interested parties down in the Galt area, that, you know, I see certainly our responsibility, one is not to assure that the state doesn't intervene, as in outline in the staff report, but secondly, that, you know, we have a, you know, kind of a holding, you know, pattern here, and that, you know, we certainly have the ability to oversee if no one steps forward, but also it wasn't to preempt anyone, you know, either local, other local districts and/or landowners if they chose to form another entity. But recognizing that some of those things can take time, either through a LAFCO process and/or organizational process. And so in the meantime, to assure that we have local decision-making, and certainly reflected in this board, but in working with constituents throughout the county, but certainly in those areas that are unmanaged thus far, that we wanted, you know, to be sure that, again, we maintain that local ability to do so. So, okay, if there's no questions, then this is a public hearing. I don't have anyone sign up to speak. I know a number of folks in the audience that have been tracking this matter. It looks like Stephanie's bringing something forward. Okay, I do have one speaker, so I'm going to declare the public hearing open. Anyone who wishes to address item 71, I have some speakers from item 72, which is the next item. But the groundwater item is invited to come forward or submit a form, but I'll call on the one person I do have signed up, and that's Hans Peter Walter. Hans Peter?
Good afternoon, board. Hans Peter Walter.
You can raise that podium, Flo. He can raise that, so he doesn't have to get you a crook in your neck.
Oh, wow.
You should know how to do that, bud.
I didn't know that I was somebody who was entitled to accommodations because of my height disability. Anyway, good afternoon. Hans Peter Walter, attorney for Slough House Resource Conservation District. I think the county is making a good move today. The district supports the county's endeavors to cover these white space areas where there's no other or not a willing currently public agency to take management responsibility. It's a necessary step in the Casumnes Sub Basin. The Conservation District looks forward to working with the county and enjoying some of the county's leadership and technical, financial capabilities to assist with efforts in that sub-basin. I would suggest, though, the one thing I would caution or suggest requires perhaps some thought is the concept that the county would elect to take this responsibility for governance over these white space areas, elect to become GSA, begin interacting with the other GSA members in these areas, and then, at some point, from the bullet points, it suggested there's almost this open blank check to step out at the first sign of somebody else who's willing, another public agency who's willing to come in and assume GSA duties. And I would suggest that the county is certainly qualified, competent to do that. And if decisions begin being made, relationships get built, an MOU or something gets signed as things move forward in the next six to 10 months, it's not so simple, perhaps, to just say, well, the county will back out and step aside at the drop of a hat, the first sign somebody else comes up. That might be more complicated, and I would suggest possibly, you might not want to write a blank check that the county would do that. But again, it's a future event that I think would require some serious thought, depending on the circumstances when that arose. That's the only comment I have. But we support the resolution and look forward to working with the county.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. I would just say, too, I don't, just reflecting on your comments, Hans Peter, and thought about this, too, that it's not some immediate exit. And I think, again, if there are viable entities that, you know, reflect, obviously, landowner interest in the organizational structure to, you know, go forward and do the planning, obviously, and the future implementation that may be required of them, we want to be an assistant. Because if you do, you read the language here, and it sounds like county will withdraw, amend if another entity submits. And I think the characterization by Carrie was one that, you know, we're willing to accept utter governance models for those areas. On the other hand, I think we do need to be deliberate and be conscientious about not only those that are already going to be in under their own GSAs, but certainly the county's role. The county would have a role anyway in some respect. And so I appreciate your comments in that regard. And I think it wasn't intended that somehow, well, we got, you know, Joe and company's interested, so now we don't have to do anything. No, I don't, it's not like that. We're going to have to stay engaged. So, good. Thanks. Okay. Also, we have Jay Schneider, and Jay's the only other one I have signed up. So if there's anyone else who wishes to address the groundwater issue in the public hearing, now's the time to get your speaker form in. Otherwise, Jay will be... And it will lower as well.
Second slide up there, by any chance?
You want to get another slide up there, Jay, you said?
Yeah, if it's possible, the slide that said the proposed areas, I think it was the second one.
Second slide. Carrie, is there a way to bring those slides back?
Yeah.
That one. Yeah.
Okay, good. Thanks, Flo.
Hello. Jay Schneider, and I'm the chairman of the Slough House Resource Conservation District. And first of all, the Slough House RCD's position has been that each of the white areas should decide for themselves how they want to be, who wants to be a GSA within them. For those that you might not know, everybody has to have a, every area has to have a groundwater sustainability agency made up of local agencies that can do it, or the county has to step in, or the state will. So you're stepping in now for those white areas where there was no other district that could or would do it, and that's great, and we certainly support that, because otherwise, as been planned out, the state would come in. We have, once there was discussion here today about the governance, and hopefully the way the groundwater plan out there will occur, is once these GSAs are all formed, one of them will be the county, then that group will work together, hopefully like they did to do the central, and create a groundwater sustainability plan, which is the new term for a groundwater management plan. And that, once that plan's developed, then a governmental governing board or jurisdiction somehow will be created. Governance will be created after you know what you're going to govern. And that's what they did with the central. They created the plan, and then after the plan was created, they created the Sacramento Central Groundwater Authority to oversee it and implement it. So it might not be unrealistic that the county would stay in this position, in other words, until such time as that new governing agency would occur after the plan is developed. But in any event, hopefully, a local jurisdiction of some sort would be able to do it ultimately. I would like to add, though, for everybody else that doesn't know, this doesn't solve the big elephant in the room in groundwater management in this county, is what happens along the Casunnes River watershed. Those areas up there, west of the Casunnes River, basically represent the watershed line. And we have a very big, not only overlap on who wants to be the jurisdiction, it's a battle between urban and rural. The rural representatives have been locked out, which has been like the Old Oma-Chumney-Hartnell Water District and the South Sacramento Agriculture Water Authority, and the Slough House Resource Conservation District. And the central's just for the, so the board knows, I'm glad you come back here and get these updates, because the local jurisdictions oppose the central's circumventing the law and taking over that area and denying the local representatives the opportunity to create a plan on that area, talking about the Casunnes watershed. Local environmental groups like Ecos also object. Regional environmental groups, the Casunnes River watershed groups, object. State organizations, such as the Department of Fish and Wildlife, object. Indian tribes, object. There is no support for it, except from Sacramento Central themselves. And it's important for this board to understand that this is a huge problem. In this, to create, for those of you who don't know, the sustainability plan is going to have to end up with a sustainable number. How much water can you pump annually? And right now, there's no accurate numbers on what's available in the Casunnes Basin, as certainly a Casunnes Basin that doesn't include historically the whole watershed. So big problems coming down the way in governance of that watershed. How do you get the environmental groups and everybody together so you can create a single plan on both sides of the river? I'm probably not explaining this well. There's not enough time, and that's not the purpose of this hearing.
Right.
But I'm giving you a lot of awareness that there's big problems, and I hope that as board members, you stay aware that the rest of the county has worked out these differences in the past, but we ran up to a brick wall trying to resolve these differences on the Casunnes watershed at this point in time. But there's light at the end of the tunnel, we're hoping. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jay. Appreciate your comments as well. And with that, then Jay is the only other speaker I have. Anyone else wish to address the board on the groundwater management proposal? All right, seeing none, then I'll bring it back to the board, close the public hearing. And I guess just would offer one comment, I think, that to Jay's point, but I know this, certainly staff and this board have stayed on track where we do have periodic reports. I would suggest maybe after the post-budget and after maybe the summer break, to come back maybe in the July timeframe, at that point in time, we will, you know, be into the next calendar phase, at least as it relates to structure, and work will continue. And obviously, some of the things that, you know, Jay referenced, you know, may have sorted themselves out, or at least be in a, you know, in a position to be better understood and worked out. So I guess I would suggest we carry this over on the calendar and get a report back on groundwater, you know, nothing else, a status update as to where we are. So I think it's really healthy, and for the broader community as well, those that aren't in attendance necessarily, but have a chance to know what's going on. So, okay. All right. Any questions, Ms. Frost or Mr. Kennedy? If not, then with that, I would move the staff recommendation, noting that we had a public hearing, and would adopt an attached resolution which would adopt the recommendations outlined in Carrie's report. So if nothing further, please, Flo. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, okay, second. Yep, I'll get that before we voted. Okay.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay. Thank you all very much on that item. And now we'll get to item 72. And I see we've got folks that have assembled. I have, just item 72, I have a couple of folks sign up. But if you're here to speak to the marijuana ordinance and zoning code matter, please fill out speaker form and get them to our clerk and one of the assistants, and we'll call upon you as we get into...
Mr. Natoli, we have about a forum in a gap. Did you guys want to do items 73, 74, and 75?
Yeah, we can do our appointments, because this was a 2:30 hearing, so we've got a few minutes before we start this. So we'll go and take care of another item while we wait the, await the ticking of clock to 2:30, so.
Okay. Thank you. For item 73, I do have a title correction, and the new title is "Recommendation to Remove Members From the Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council for Failure to File Statement of Economic Interest, Form 700."
What's the new title?
That is the corrected title.
Oh, that is correct. Oh, to remove. Okay, okay.
Related to the statement of economic interest.
Okay.
So move approval.
Okay. And I just would note as well, Ms. Frost, just in the event there's some deference, certainly to the supervisor district, particularly planning advisory councils, that sometimes there's some extenuating circumstances where folks don't get their forms, and even though they're required to. And if you were so inclined, obviously made a motion to approve this, we will show deference to members to allow them to reach out, because oftentimes, those appointments have come through a process where the district supervisor has vetted the members of the CPAC. So just for future reference, if that was of interest to you to...
Yeah, we did have some review and discussion of this, and I think it was more than just the filing of the form. There were some meetings missed and...
Yeah. Very good. Okay, so we have a motion, a second, then, to approve the item, the re-titled item, which is to basically vacate that seat on the CPAC for failure to file. Okay, with that, then, if there's nothing further, this is item 73, Ms. Peters, this is on the Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council. There's an appointment where the parties did not file the required 730 form, or 700, excuse me, 7. We're voting to vacate the seat. Okay, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay.
Okay, and for item 72... Okay. And for item 74, I am asking the board to drop this agenda from the, drop this item from the agenda, and also, for the record, want to note that there is a title correction. It, the corrected title is Recommendation to Remove Members from the Adult and Aging Commission for Failure of Participation Pursuant to the Bylaws of the Adult and Aging Commission.
So, are we, are we voting on, we're voting to drop this?
Voting to drop.
Okay. Moving second to drop this item. Nothing, I had no one time to speak on these items. All right, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present. Okay.
Okay.
And then for your nominations, this will be really quick. For, today, for continuing to May 9, the Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee, the Local Child Care Planning and Development Council, and the Sacramento County Youth Commission. For your matters today, the first one is the Arden Arcade Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue to April 25.
Okay. Assessment Appeals Board. Mr. Natoli?
Yes, we have, the interviews were conducted, and we have recommendation from the chiefs of staff recommending nomination of Maurice Thomas to the general public seat, and continue remainder to May 23.
Thank you. Next is the Cassunis Area Community Planning Advisory Council.
And I nominate John Merchant and James Moore for reappointment.
Okay. And then District 5 applicants for any vacant seats, we're gonna continue those. We don't have any current applicants, continue those to May 23.
Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council.
Okay, we have note to continue, there's an pending interview with one of the parties applied for the parent seat, so continue that to April 25.
Okay.
And I guess we're still seeking applicants for professional seat on that body as well.
Okay. Disability Advisory Commission.
We have no applicants for the designated disabled seat. Would nominate, based upon chief's recommendation, interviews William Falai for the general seat and continue remainder to May 23.
Public Health Advisory Board.
Okay, we have four of those, having all been interviewed. We have recommended by chiefs of staff, Stephen Heath, community member, Joffe Elborja, community member, Jack Zwalk, community member, and Felicia Bay, public health, a health member.
Great. And then we have the Sacramento County Mental Health Board. Mr. Natoli, will you be covering District 1?
Okay. No applicants for District 1, no applicants for District 4.
I had a note here that District 1 was making a recommendation on Dimitri. Is that different from your note?
Right. I was gonna, to, appoint to, I was gonna nominate District, I think we'd spoken with District 2, gentleman resides in District 2, but not done necessarily by district, and that I'm prepared to nominate him for District 5 seat. That would be Dimitri Godmanier.
Got it.
Family, I'm not sure, you know, if we can hold that over, let's hold that over for, till April 25. I want to make sure we get, you can either be a family member or consumer. And I guess we had a couple of applicants. So rather than get into that today, let's hold that over till April 25.
So we'll hold also on the, the nomination for?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. And then Sacramento area, South Sacramento area Community Planning Advisory Council?
Continue to May 9.
Okay. And that concludes your nominations.
Okay, very good.
Okay, so now-
Okay, now back to item 72. It's now, it's 2:30.
Now we're ready for item 72. It's the Marijuana Ordinance Request to Adopt a Zoning Code Amendments to Chapter 3 and Chapter 7 of the Zoning Code Related to Commercial Marijuana Activities and Personal Marijuana Cultivation. You are introducing an ordinance, and then waiving full reading and continuing to April 25 for adoption.
Okay. And I'm gonna invite Leanne to start us off in just a moment. I just want to note for those in the audience, I have a couple of folks that have signed up. If you wish to speak to this, once staff report is completed, and we hear from, those who are presenting, and any questions by board members, then we'll open up to, to the public for comments. And as I said, I have a couple of you who have signed up. And if there are others who wish to do that, please fill out a speaker form, and we'll call upon you in the order I received those. So, okay. With that, I'll turn to, I guess, Leanne. You're gonna kick it off, or any opening comments by Mr. Gill or Mr. Leonard? Okay?
All right. Good afternoon, members of the board. Leanne Moffett, your county planning director. I am here to present the staff recommendations related to zoning code and county code changes regarding the regulating and permitting of marijuana. I want to start off with a few introductions. Along with myself, I have Kate Rose with Planning who's here to support us from county council specifically. In addition to your county council, we have Susie Mazarway, who's done a lot of the heavy lifting on the ordinance preparation and details. I want to thank the following individuals who also came to the Planning Commission in support of this item and spoke, including the district attorney, Anne Marie Schubert, who is here today, also prepared to speak to you. From the sheriff, we have Chief Deputy Phil Brelgie, Anne Marie Wooden, and Jason Bateser from Environmental Management. They all spoke and supported the item at the Planning Commission. Also here today, if there are any questions or issues, we have Barry Chamberlain with Code Enforcement, and Robert Logsdon and Robin Rasmussen from Building Permits and Inspection. So that's the staff collection here specifically-
And Julie Jensen, Ag Commissioner.
And, I'm sorry, Julie Jensen, the Ag Commissioner. Thank you very much. Sorry, did I forget anybody else? Regarding outreach, we have had a website with a large distribution list that we have been using. We did a press release. We have informed the Community Planning Advisory Councils about this via email. And we did hold a hearing before the Planning Commission that I will speak to later, where we heard testimony from about 10 individuals, although there were far more than that in attendance at the Planning Commission. So starting here, with some of the background information, just to remind your board, you have touched upon this subject several times in the past, initially adopting an interim urgency ordinance back in 2011. But then in 2014, you adopted ordinance changes to prohibit all outdoor marijuana cultivation, and to limit indoor medical marijuana cultivation to no more than nine plants. And in 2015, when you updated the overall development code, you continued a statement in there about prohibiting items relating to federal law. But you relied more on the county's permissive zoning system and didn't actually put a line item in there about marijuana. And so this item, these code amendments are intended to address that and go beyond just that lack of state saying anything. So originally, back in 2015, voters adopted the Medical Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act, MCRA, but more recently, the voters adopted Prop 64, the Adult Use of Marijuana Act, AUMA, or ALMA, passed by the voters. And that addressed recreational use. So Prop 64 allows local governments to determine how to regulate retail sales and cultivation of marijuana, and sets guidelines for state agencies to establish a licensing system and regulatory framework for the cultivation, manufacture, transport, testing, and sale of recreational marijuana. So the state will, agencies will essentially issue, renew, discipline, suspend, or revoke licenses for marijuana businesses. Businesses are not required to obtain a local permit or authorization before being issued a state license. But if the locals have adopted an ordinance that does not allow for the commercial cultivation or dispensary or, or anything else, then the state will not issue a license. So if the locals do nothing, the state can issue a license. If the locals are permissive, the state can issue a license. But if the local ordinance does not allow that commercial use, then the state will not issue a license. They are to begin issuing licenses by January 2018, and they are still drafting the numerous regulations and ordinances to be available at the, around, they're supposed to be issued around the end of summer of 2017. So a lot of that is still being undertaken. The current zoning code and county codes inadequately address the provisions, and need some modifications, which is why we are here today. Staff also recognizes that it's a very complex environment and a very fluid environment, and that the state has not yet had time to set in place their regulatory structure. And there's also a certain level of uncertainty about how the federal government is going to react. So we have proposed a number of zoning code amendments. The item that was just passed out to you, the printed materials that were loaded online, one of the tables cut off a part of the table. So we wanted to make sure that you had the full version of the table.
You said the table. So if somebody went into the online, the table would have been-
There's a little bit of a corner of the table that is, was, when it got PDFed, is not entirely visible.
Okay. Are there some copies of this in the back of the room, in case someone-
Yes, Kate has extra copies.
Okay, somebody in the audience didn't get a copy, if you wanted to see what was left off from the online edition. I see Carla and others may want a copy, so, okay. All right, thanks.
So we wanted to make sure we had copies, that just a little bit of the table was, was not visible. So the overall approach that staff is recommending today is to basically hold steady with the direction that we have previously received from the board, in the context of contemplating recreational marijuana, and to prohibit the commercial, sorry, prohibit commercial marijuana activities. And we define that as cultivation, manufacture, processing, laboratory testing, distribution or delivery, and sales of marijuana or marijuana products. But to continue to allow personal marijuana cultivation as an accessory use to a primary residence, subject to compliance with the Sacramento County Code. So that is, we're basically not distinguishing between medical and recreational here. We're basically saying you had, you could do nine plants for medical before, now you can not do nine plants regardless of whether it's medical or recreational. And you can have those as required by state law, but not at this point to contemplate commercial activities.
Just a question for you, Leanne. So under your bullet points there, or slash lines, under manufacturing, processing, and that also prohibits baking, production of edibles, those types of ventures, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
The county code amendments complement the zoning code amendments, and they have a number of provisions about managing the personal cultivation as required by state law. So cultivation would not be allowed outdoors. It would, in the, state law allows you to go as low as six, but we are recommending to stick with the current nine plants, so a little bit more than the minimum set under state law. The cultivation would have to occur within a fully enclosed and secure structure and inaccessible to minors. The primary use must remain as a residence, so you can't just turn a house into, only for growing marijuana. Cultivation cannot be visible from the public right-of-way. Lighting, plumbing, and electrical must comply with building and fire codes. And for units that are rental units, we need to see a written notarized consent of the property owner. And we will be trying to work with the Rental Housing Association to get additional information to rental owners out there. So a number of those details are in your attachments, if you want to read the specific language, because that language is provided there. So the staff recommendations today are to adopt the ordinance, amending chapters 3 and 7 of the zoning code, to waive full reading, recognize the exempt status of the request pursuant to CEQA. The Planning Commission did review and hear this item and spent some time on it. They are recommending approval on a four-to-zero vote. One member had a planned absence. The Planning Commission did also want to convey their recommendation that the board should revisit medical access in particular, once the state has issued their regulations and after some of the uncertainty is worked out. So that was one note I wanted to pass on. With regard to other comments, we have actually not received a lot of late-breaking comments. We, there was correspondence sent to the board and to staff by ETTI, one of the unions representing code enforcement. Staff has discussed that comment letter, and we do have Barry Chamberlain here. We recognize some of the concerns expressed there in that letter. We do note, however, that the regulatory scheme that we are proposing to the board does not represent a change, particularly in what the county is allowing. It recognizes what state law has done with regard to recreational use. But basically, we're continuing to do the same thing we have been, which is to not allow commercial and continue to allow nine plants. So this has been the approach the county has taken for quite a number of years. And we will continue to work with code enforcement staff to address security concerns that they may have, to try to make sure we have sheriff officers available to accompany them if there's any unsafe circumstances. So that pretty much concludes my portion of the presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Leanne. Let me ask board members, do they have any questions at this juncture?
Nope.
All right. No questions, and with our presentation, thank you for the summary. Is there any other county staff? I know we have our district attorney, Anne Marie Schubert here, and other representatives. Anyone else wish to, or is Leanne speak for the group?
I had indicated, I thought Supervisor Natoli, that you might want to hear from Anne Marie Schubert, and possibly the sheriff at your discretion.
Okay, yeah. Well, that may be a good idea. If they wouldn't mind briefly just, you know, either supplementing and or adding anything of additional relevance to consideration here. I'll just say that in previous discussions before this board, prior to the passage of Prop 64, when we talked about how the county was going to handle the indoor and outdoor grows, certainly District Attorney Schubert and Sheriff Jones and his staff were very much engaged in those conversations. Hence, we had the nine plants that were permitted in indoor grows and prohibitions for outdoor grows. But again, I want to appreciate, I appreciate again in my comments, the work both of them do in law enforcement, but certainly their contributions to this, along with other county staff, as we have this matter before us today. So Anne Marie, I'll start with you.
Thank you, members of the board. Appreciate your opportunity. Let me talk to you today. I think it's probably no shock to this board that I did not support Prop 64. However, with that being said, we accept what the voters approved, which is the recreational use of marijuana. But with that, obviously, you know that it was left to local jurisdictions to decide what kind of regulations you want to impose. So my comments today are very similar to what I said, both on Prop 64, as well as to the Planning Commission, and I'm sure that Chief Brelgie will parallel some of my comments. Obviously, from a public safety point of view, the most primary concern is what impact will the commercialization of marijuana have on the, on the county of Sacramento? And I come at it from not just a prosecutor, but a parent, but I also come at it from a homeowner in the unincorporated area of Sacramento County. So the concerns we have, which are pretty, pretty basic, are what is going to be the potential increase in crime in our community if we allow for the commercialization? Much of what I say today is not just based upon what I would say is our own institutional knowledge, working in the trenches over the years, but it's also looking at other states that have allowed for the legalization. And I look oftentimes to Colorado to see what's occurred in Colorado, what can we expect here in our community if we allow for the commercialization? So when we talk about public safety, it's not just about possible increases in crimes. It's, it's obviously about the potential of increase in marijuana-related traffic incidents and fatalities. It's about illegal grow operations that we may see, and I'm sure we'll see in Sacramento County, and I'm sure Chief Brelgie can mention that. It's also as, as a community member, a parent, a prosecutor, is what, if we legalize this in the commercial aspect here, we allow for dispensaries, allow for outdoor grows, we allow for delivery and transportation, what impact will it have on the children of our community? And releasing that stigma that oftentimes goes with this legalization. So when you look at things like Colorado, what we know from Colorado is that there has been an astronomical increase in illegal grows. If you look at the letters from the, the district attorney from Denver, you know that there's been massive, massive increase in citations, law enforcement drain on resources for those illegal cultivations. I think one of the most stark realities that we saw in Colorado is that the legalization and the commercialization has had a disproportionate impact on the poorest neighborhoods. So we see things like twice as many pot shops as there are Starbucks in, in Colorado, and that's a sad state of affairs, in my opinion. But I think it's also, what, what do we expect for our youth? So if we have dispensaries or pot shops in neighborhoods in Sacramento, what impact will that have on, on our children? And the potential for them becoming users or addicted to that type of situation? Obviously, public health concerns. We know from other states that there's been increases in number of ER trips, increases of overdoses, increases of children under the age of five that are being exposed to these kinds of things, increases of exposures to animals, of these types of things. We know that the THC content is nowhere near what it was back in the 60s or the 70s. We know it's much, much higher, and has a very negative impact on our community. And then as, as a DA, and just really a resident, is what impact will it have on our environment? So the, the impact of pesticides, the impact of diversion of our streams, the impact of illegal done-
dumps that we see all over Sacramento County will only increase. And so those are the particular concerns, and I would ask Chief Bralge, you know, the other thing about is reminding, everybody knows that we have not had any direction from the current Trump administration on what will they do with federal law as it relates to marijuana. And so I believe very strongly that it's premature for us to move forward and try to do this without having some idea of what, what their position will be. And so with that, I'd just ask Chief Bralge to give his two cents.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Chief Deputy Phil Bralge. I'd just like to kind of, she covered a good portion of that, but I'd just like to say that we are too, as the sheriff's department, are supportive of the ordinance as, as it stands and amended right now. Although I don't think we're going to, we're going to probably remain status quo as far as the current crimes we have related to a lot of marijuana outdoor activities. I think if this was pushed even further, I think you would see a tremendous explosion of those type of crimes. Somebody asked me earlier if we, that this is going to reduce it. I don't necessarily think it's going to reduce it, but I think we can hold status quo and hopefully do reduce the amount of use we have. Last year, we had 12% of our homicides in 2016 that were marijuana-related. And I think with the, if we went down the road of potentially allowing more plants in a commercialized type grow, you would see even more of that explosion throughout the county and whatnot. So as it stands, the sheriff's department does support the ordinance and the amendments as, as written, and we are supportive of it.
Okay. Thanks, Chief. Thanks, District Attorney Schubert. Any questions or comments? Supervisor Frost, I think Supervisor Peters.
It seems like the sentiment of accepting the idea of marijuana is moving toward marijuana and on a local level and state and national level. And whether we regulate it or not, if other cities and counties around us choose to commercialize marijuana, then there's no cutoff. Those people are going to be driving through our county, and we're going to have those problems associated with that. So my question to you is, I mean, do you think, I mean, do you think the sheriff needs tools in order to react to or, you know, enforce, you know, laws and regulations around it if it's going to be a cost? My understanding is if we don't regulate it, then we're going to have, we won't have an opportunity for funding that will help pay for some of the problems associated with it. So I, I support this ordinance. I support holding off and, and waiting and kind of sitting back and watching to see where the problems emerge so that we can make a smart, you know, move forward. But I wonder if you can make a comment regarding that, you know, how it impacts us even if, even if we, even if we ban marijuana from the county and we say we're not going to have dispensaries, we're still going to have some of that impact that they have in Colorado's with public safety and public health, et cetera.
Go ahead, Phil.
I would agree. I think we are in uncharted waters. And I think if Denver's any indication on what's going to happen if it were to be regulated and legalized more in Sacramento County, I think what Denver has shown that it's going to tremendously increase as opposed to hopefully staying status quo with what we have. Only time will tell as far as where we go and what we do. So staying that course, I think is a good, a good strategy. I really do.
And I would just add to that, what they saw in Denver was a 900% increase in unlawful cultivation. And they saw over a 3,000 percentage increase in the quantities. And so I think it's an illusion for us to believe that just by, by allowing it, it's going to somehow get rid of the illegal grows. And, and the reality is, is that we may end up having a large number of illegal grows, which becomes a very, very significant drain on law enforcement. And if we hold steady and say we don't want these in our community, then at least the stigma is there. You know, with all due respect, there are some folks in our community that are not going to wake up tomorrow and say that they're going to pay taxes on this. That's not going to happen. They're going to continue on this illegal behavior.
Point taken.
Okay, good. Ms. Peters?
Really, it was more of a comment. First of all, I appreciate both of you coming over. To me, very telling in this was the letter from the district attorney of Denver. And I think the first sentence in his letter that I saw said that he had supported the legalization originally and was thinking that, you know, there would be a lot of tax money raised to address crime, addiction, and that sort of thing. And yet, and now he's completely turned around to being against it because of these huge increases in crime, children being poisoned, eating mom and dad's edibles at home, that kind of thing. And then I went to a CSAC meeting, it's probably been a year, and the gentleman who runs the, he called himself the Pot Czar. I forget what his official title is. That's easier to remember. And he said they could have taxed marijuana 100% of sale value and not had enough money to address all of the issues that were created by the, as I said, poisonings and murders and burglaries and car thefts and addiction problems. So I, I think sitting back and seeing how it goes is the, is the way to go here. And I appreciate you both being out on the, talking to the various city councils in our county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one follow-on question then. So as I understand it from the information presented to us, and again, you know, the, certainly the district attorney covers the entirety of the county, and the sheriff, certainly from the standpoint of law enforcement services in the unincorporated area, but also obviously the jail and a number of other activities has a broader, a broader swath. But that citrusides, elk grove, Folsom, I believe, galt, you didn't have galt in Iltin in your chart, but I believe galt also prohibits dispensaries. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
I don't know, but I don't know where Iltin.
I don't believe they've taken a vote yet.
Okay, all right. So we have Iltin and Ranch Cordova that have yet to take a vote on prohibition of dispensaries, or at least conformance with Prop 64. Is that?
That, that's correct. I believe Ranch Cordova is slated for in May.
Okay. I've just suggested in future, if we talk about municipalities, that we include all of them in our charts in the future. It's important. But I guess my point to, Emery, have you spoken with city leaders, city managers in those communities?
Peripherally. I mean, I knew that they had already taken votes. I knew the city of Sacramento had gone down the path to allow for indoor grows, but it was far down the track for me to get involved in that.
Right. Because they permitted up to, I guess, up to 30 dispensaries, the city of Sacramento. And thus far, no other municipality has taken the approach of permitting dispensaries in the county, and certainly this county with the orders before us would not do it as well, so.
I could be incorrect, but I believe that their 30 dispensaries are for medicinal, and then they put a moratorium on it. I don't know if they voted for recreational dispensaries. I thought that they-
Okay, those are for medical, right, for medical. That's an important distinction, absolutely. It's medical marijuana. I don't want to confuse the two. So as far as recreational, they have not. So, okay. All right. That's all I had. And no further questions. Thank you both for, in your departments, agencies for being involved. Okay. Any other county staff to present at this point in time? If not, then I do have a handful of speakers, and I'll call them in the next, as I said, in order I receive them. I have Rachel Sutherland, followed by Ricardo Garcia, followed by Tom Misrick, and Carla Lowe. And those are the four speakers I have signed up. If there are others who wish to address the board, please come forward. So Rachel, you want to come forward? Three minutes for your comments.
So hello, Supervisor Natoli and other members of the board. I'd like to first ask you to please excuse me if you have a hard time understanding me. I recently had surgery, jaw surgery, and I have a little bit of a speech impediment because of that. So I'll try to be as clear as possible if you don't understand.
We're hearing you fine. Okay, thanks for explaining.
Okay. So my name is Rachel Sutherland, and I'm a Sacramento County Code Enforcement Officer. I have been a code enforcement officer here in Sacramento County, oh gosh, over 12 years. In August, it'll be 13 years. And I can tell you that in the course of my employment at the county of Sacramento, I've never felt unsafe in my job, really, unsafe in my job, because there's always been a line, a clear distinction between code enforcement and peace officers, law enforcement, or the sheriff. And a few years ago, we were required to start wearing these vests. And I'll put it on for you. It's going to be a little awkward. And I'd like you to just take a look at me now, when I go into the field as an officer, what I look like when I'm doing this zoning code inspections. And, and I told you it'd be awkward. And vehicle inspections, and it'll be marijuana cultivation inspections once this proposal passes. And we've been doing that for a little while now. And I'd like you to take a look and just tell me whether or not, or just yourselves, I mean, looking at me now, I look like a peace officer now. In the past, when I conducted inspections, I wore, you know, nice pants, a polo with my county shield on it and my identification. And I was never in the history of my employment mistaken for a police officer until I began wearing this vest. And now on a daily basis, I am mistaken for a police officer when I'm in the field. And that's not an exaggeration. So if you ask us to do drug enforcement activity work, please understand that although we may dress like police officers, we are not police officers. We're not peace officers. We don't have any, I can tell you, I don't have any type of police officer training. I've never been through any post academy. I don't take people down. I do zoning code inspections and, you know, public health and safety inspections and nuisance inspections, but I'm not a police officer. So when you ask me to do drug enforcement inspections, you're asking me to do the work that many of our officers feel is, is peace officer work, that it is work that we should never have been doing in the first place. And that now will put us even more at risk because the line between peace officer and code enforcement officer has blurred, and it will become even more blurry when you have us doing full-on drug enforcement activity. So last Friday, we were told, well, let me back up. Previously, our enforcement efforts have been on a voluntary basis. Any officer who's been on the marijuana enforcement project has been voluntary. Our officers have been able to say yes or no, I do or I don't want to do this activity. But we were told last Friday that it would be mandatory for now all of us to begin doing drug enforcement activity. So we're going to all be required to do this. And so many of our officers are extremely concerned about their safety because we are not peace officers. We don't have safety retirements. We don't have modified safety retirements. And as you know, at this point, we're inspecting full-on grow operations. Grow operations that are being operated by gangs, by the cartel. This is criminal operations, and, and we have code enforcement officers out there enforcing on these people without any type of safety retirement or provisions for our safety. That if I were to get killed or shot at a grow operation that's being operated by gang members or the cartel, who takes care of my family? Peace officers have this safety net. They have that protection. If something happens to them, they have that protection, but I don't. We also don't have safety provisions that peace officers have related to our personal security. Under California law, peace officers have their personal information protected from searches. So if they get pulled over or Google searches, things like that, if an officer arrests somebody on one of these projects or these drug enforcement inspections, the person being arrested isn't going to be able to find the officer's information for retribution, but they can find ours. You could Google me. You can come to my house and kill me if you want, if you're one of those drug members or gang members who's operating the grow. If because of my actions, you're losing thousands of plants and your profits, you can Google me and come and find my family, and you can find where I live. We're not provided a secured location for our work. When sheriff's deputies go to work each day, they pull into a secure lot where they take their personal vehicles, and they're safe. They can get out of their car, go into the office, change, do their gear, leave, at the end of the day, check out, and they're still safe getting to and from their car. Our office isn't like that. I leave to my car, and there's nobody there to protect me each day at the end of the night to make sure that, that a disgruntled drug dealer's not there to shoot me.
Rachel, I don't want to cut you sore. This is important information. I know you probably speak for others-
I do.
-in your department. So I'm going to give you a little more time, but maybe you can, you know, another, I mean, it's important stuff. So I'll give, you know, you can conclude. I know, I trust that Tom Misrick's going to address some of this on behalf of your represented unit, but I think use being an officer certainly is important information. So take another, you know, a few seconds here and go ahead.
Okay. So there are inherent dangers related to this activity, to this drug enforcement activity and the cultivations. And the board, I know that you're aware of it because you acknowledged this in 2014 when we had the ordinances and the amendments. So we ask you to please consider not placing this responsibility on the shoulders of officers, code enforcement officers who have no safety retirements, who have no assurance that they're going to be able to be protected and have their family protected, who don't have the same assurances that peace officers do. Because truly, this is drug enforcement activity. This is not simple zoning inspections. And our officers feel that it is inappropriate and irresponsible to simply add marijuana restrictions to the zoning code and expect that our code enforcement officers are able to safely enforce this going forward. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Rachel. Thank you for your work on behalf of the county. We'll come back to that in a moment. I think, you know, there's some important points there I think that we need to sort through in just a moment, but let's hear from our speakers. So, okay, Ricardo Garcia, and then Tom Misrick. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, board. My name is Ricardo Garcia. I've been working for the county of Sacramento for the past 12 and a half years in the capacity of a code enforcement officer. Marijuana is still against federal law and is recognized as a Schedule I-type drug, which is defined as currently having no acceptable medical use and a high potential for drug abuse. I speak on behalf of myself and my fellow code enforcement officers, and that it is, in our opinion, that without law enforcement training to back up this type of enforcement is potentially dangerous for us. It has been our experience and observation while in the field, we have been exposed to chemicals that may pose a hazard to us in addition to vicious dogs and individuals with criminal records and gang ties. We, as code enforcement officers, are not physically equipped, nor have we had the extensive training to deal with the enforcement of illegal drugs. We recently had an officer that was viciously attacked by a dog that broke loose of his chain, and the officer was seriously injured. It was later determined that there was marijuana on the premises. We don't deal with nine plants. When we do inspections, we're talking 100-plus plants, mostly from the criminal element. There are other concerns in regards to the team that have some medical challenges. Being exposed to these conditions could potentially compromise their health even further. In the past, our department has had volunteers to do marijuana enforcement. However, I personally have stayed away from all illegal drugs, as this does not align with my moral beliefs. And just wanted you guys to hear that.
Okay. Thank you, Ricardo. Thank you for being here today. Appreciate your comments and certainly your work on behalf of the county. Okay. Next, I have Tom Misrick, and then Carla Lowe, and those are our last two speakers, and then we'll come back to this item here in a moment.
Thank you for having me today. I'm sure most of you know me, and thank you, board, for addressing this issue with us. I can't speak any more than what these people have done. I mean, they're, they're out there on a daily basis in the line. I can just tell you what we've met and conferred on with management on this issue. And it was discussed about the safety. It was discussed about not being compensated safety pay. We were assured that the sheriffs would be present with us at all actions to enforce this legislation. I heard over the weekend and just yesterday, which was a little dismay, that that is not necessarily going to be the case. Not always are we going to have the protection of the sheriff's office with us. And I really do think that that's not the way to run this business. It's really interesting that zoning, and it's just like in state law, as you all know, laws get made without funding. Who's going to pay for this? Planning Department made a nice attempt at putting it together, but they even admit that it was going to be expensive. They even admit that there really isn't any funding for this. So the one thing that needs to be considered is, if you do have code officers doing this work and taking away from their normal duties, which is a reach of different things, they do, not only do they do fire department items, they do waste management issues, and not get reimbursed for those, they are the lowest paid in this area for the work that they do. And the items that they have on their plate are the most of any other code enforcement in this whole area. They do a number of things. To add this to it with the reduced staff that they have and the financial wherewithal that they have been imposed against, I think it's just poor planning to do it at this exact moment. They need training to begin with, and they need funding. Once those are in place, then ETTI really doesn't have any issues about this ordinance. But until that happens, I think it's premature. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Appreciate your comments. Thank you, Tom. Appreciate your comments. Okay, and the last speaker I have sign up is Carla Lowe.
Good afternoon, and welcome. Thank you, Don. I'm Carla Lowe. First, I'd like to remind the people who are in this boardroom, Mr. Nattoli might remember, but this board has always been extremely concerned about the health and safety of its people, of its citizens. Forty years ago, when I first came to this board meeting, Mr. Nattoli was a staff person to Toby Johnson, as I require, as I remember.
You remember, right?
We asked that you ban the head shops then selling the toys and tools that were designed for youth, luring kids to use of marijuana, the Frisbees and the bongs that I brought and showed. That became, that action became a state law soon thereafter. A number of years later, we came and asked you to ban and not prevent, not even ban, needle exchange programs for the health and safety of our people. And again, this board took a positive action. About five years ago, as I recall, we came and asked you to shut, to close the pot shops that were springing up, like someone said, more frequently than Starbucks around Sacramento County. And the board then said, we need to hear from the cities. My husband and I went and spoke with, giving them backup material, to all seven of the cities in Sacramento County. And all six, by the way, did ban the pot shops for so-called medical marijuana, all with the exception of the city. And I was listening to Rachel talking about the danger that those folks in enforcement risk facing every day. I need to remind everybody that what we're talking about, this meyer, this mecca of marijuana is all in the name of so-called medical marijuana, and as someone wisely pointed out, is illegal, all illegal, under federal law, every single bit of it. The 50,000 grows in California, $35 billion business. California provides 60% of all of the marijuana in the United States. This is serious business. I encourage this board to ban, make it as tight as possible, an ordinance. Frankly, I thought the nine plants was a typo. I didn't even realize that currently you allow nine plants growing. That's absurd, absurd. Do you know that one ounce of marijuana sells for about $300 in the pot shops in Sacramento? 16 ounces in a pound? And you can grow in a home, ironically, you can grow, get four or five yields a year. Do you realize what we're talking about in money? I encourage you to reconsider that nine number. It's absurd. I really encourage you, and I think I read, and I gave you all the backup material before the planning commission, I gave you all the data from Colorado, I gave you this infographic that's all documented, all of the harms of marijuana. I encourage you to ban every form of commercial marijuana in Sacramento County. Make it absolutely as tight as possible, and I heard your concern, Ms. Frost, about people from out of the area coming in. You know what? Currently, this is a NIMBY issue, not my backyard. Sacramento County has got to be responsible for its own citizen, and maybe down the line, they will pitch it further and further and further, just as we did 40 years ago when we first banned the head shops. City after city after city said, not in my backyard. I encourage you also, I didn't see that you have banned mobile delivery, but under the legal cities' facts, it can be banned. I didn't see that. I couldn't download it. Yesterday, I tried to see your absolute wording of your ordinance, and I see the numbers are blinking. I've given you all the backup material. I encourage you, listen to what your DA said, listen to what your sheriff said. Talk to Tom Gorman, who used to live here in Sacramento, who's now head of HIDA in Colorado. Everything we can do to discourage children from using this highly potent, long-acting, addicting, mind-altering drug that is destroying our kids' developing brains, which take 25 years to develop. It's got an impact on every man, woman, and child in our community. Rentals, home values goes down. And then if we could talk for another hour, we would talk about the environment and the damage that's being done in our forests. And the people who call us week after week after week saying they can't even sleep because the people next door are growing this stuff. It has such a stench, folks. You know, it's called skunk. We had a, I have to tell you this story.
Carla, you'd wrap it up. I'll let you tell the last story, though. Go ahead.
One more story. This is true. Skunk is the name of the street weed, right? Everybody knows that. We had a dead skunk under our house two weeks ago. The smell permeated our house. I didn't realize, with my broken neck, I could only go a couple miles from home, but in two different situations, at a restaurant and at a retailer, people thought I was smoking weed for my medical marijuana, for my broken neck. This stuff is everywhere, and we've got to do everything we can to get rid of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla, and thanks for your work over the years.
Thank you, Don.
Okay, with that, then Carla was the last speaker I had signed up, so if there's no one else wants to come forward, I know that there are board members may have questions and comments, and I guess I would just take us back to NAV, comments we heard from some of the code enforcement officers that wasn't very clearly addressed. And I think if we're getting into another realm here, certainly in light of the testimony we've heard, obviously, from employees, but I think as highlighted in the comments from our chief and district attorney, there are, you know, some relevant issues there, and if law enforcement isn't going to, isn't planning to accompany in all these enforcement actions, then I think that's problematic. But I'll let you address, at least starting here. I'm sure we've got other questions. I see Mr. Kennedy's punched up as well, so.
We have Barry Chamberlain, our chief of code enforcement, and I would like to have him address the issues and the training that he is proposing with this resolution. Barry?
That's fine. I think that, you know, what procedures we're going to use, too, because that's why I heard something about you, beyond the training and --
Training procedure, his outreach with the EMD, with the sheriff's office, so he --
Good afternoon, Board.
Good afternoon.
Barry Chamberlain, chief of code enforcement. Some very good points made by my officers. This is, we're just starting with this, working with the EMD to get some training specific to marijuana inspections that we're working with to get on tap in May or June. The issues, the rest of the issues, we can work through as we get to them. I mean, we're just getting started. The asking for sheriff's help on all of our inspections, couldn't speak for the sheriff when we were speaking about it at our staff meetings, so moving forward, we'll work with the sheriff's department, figure out a plan to where we can actually have a sheriff's officer with all of our officers when they do inspections. The plan beginning, that we're going to begin with is what we have done in the past, and that's have an officer in the north and officer in the south to work the grows, the outdoor grows, and then after a season, we disperse the cases to our officers to finish up. We can look at that whole process, but it's been pretty successful so far. I think that, I think that there's a good possibility that there's going to be a large number of cases. The cases totals have went up every year that we have dealt with. Going forward, we may need to add additional help to do this. My feeling is, is that it's going to be a bigger part of our process and that our officers, all of our officers are going to have to take part in it.
Well, I mean, I would, thank you, Barry, and maybe we have some questions of you on the, I would just say that hearing the comments, and I guess this would be certainly to NAV and others from a budgetary standpoint, that, you know, it was one thing when we were regulating medicinal grows, and now if it's for recreational or personal use, doesn't require the medicinal backdrop, however veiled or weak or strong that was, that I think, too, you know, the point Barry makes and others is that, you know, the prevalence may very well increase, and I think the need for, you know, kind of the general health and safety and welfare of the, you know, citizens of this county, and for those that choose and those that choose not to, you know, we're going, that's an obligation we have, and to have code enforcement as a part of that is one thing, but I think to have the proper law enforcement backup and assistance and other training is key, and it's going to have a budgetary impact. But to me, it falls under that category of general health and welfare for the citizens of this county. And if this is the ordinance that we put in place, then we need to be able to stand behind it and offer our personnel the proper support to carry it out as best they can, so.
Absolutely. A couple of the comments that I heard, I want to make sure that the work that we have at the sheriff's office, that when officers need assistance, that that assistance is there. Chief Porelge is here. I'm going to talk to Scott and also to Eric to make sure that when our folks need help, that they're there. A couple of the other comments that were made about getting more funding, I think, as we're looking at our budget staring at us in June, and with Barry's input and with Penrose's input, if augmentation is needed, we'll be back here recommending that to you. The other thing that I do want to have Barry look at a little bit is the testimony that, and I forget her name, but when she did put that vest on.
Rachel.
Rachel, it does look like a cop at that point.
That's one of my questions. Is it really necessary to have that, I mean, the same color as a sheriff's vest, it's got a badge on the shoulder? Used to be they wore bulletproof vests under their clothes. I mean, I don't know what's changed.
That's what I want to, I'm embarrassed to admit that I do not know why that switch happened. I have an idea why we got there.
Hopefully, it wasn't because it looked cool.
No, I don't believe so. I think this came when our animal control officer, I believe there was a shooting.
Yeah, he was killed, Don.
But I want to work with Barry, and I want Barry to work with our employees. She is absolutely right. That does look like a police officer, and if we have a different way to get there, let's explore that.
Well, on that, I'll just follow through the chair. Maybe there's different variations of, you know, depending on what their beat is and what they're, you know, what they're doing. I mean, because I'll tell you, I've gone out with a code enforcement officer down in District Two in some areas, that having that vest, you know, in looking like law enforcement, it was, I mean, I wouldn't have gone in some of the apartment complexes unless I was with her wearing that vest, and it probably is a protection mechanism as much, but I see that it's not necessary, I mean, for every code enforcement officer under any circumstances.
That needs to be looked at.
Yeah, the attire, both from a personal safety, but certainly from a, you know, what you project into, I think the other things that could come of that, because if they see it as law enforcement, they get their name clearly printed on their vest.
That was my other issue that I want to work with Barry and Mike Penrose, is that the point she made on that, that's a very valid point, and she's right that if you post-certified, you do not, you cannot look folks' address up. And if they're making enforcement and they can, they can be identified, we need to look at what kind of safety we can --
But there's a balance we have to find here, and again, you want certain people to have the protection, certainly to be official, and some people can recognize and identify them, hopefully for a positive reason, but also to understand who it is that they may be encountering on their property. In a lot of cases, that, you know, that's touchy enough as it is, but, okay, Supervisor Frost?
All right. I have a question relating to code enforcement. It sounds like you have, all your code enforcement officers at one time or another have to be, they now have to be willing to work marijuana, so to speak.
Yes, ma'am.
So there's not a way to have people designated to just specialize in that type of enforcement, where they're specially trained and qualified, so that we don't have, I mean, it kind of looks like we have long-term employees who are almost afraid to enter into this part of code enforcement. Is there, is it something that they all have to be able to do, or can you designate specialists in that area?
I think that that's a possibility. That would have to be staff that we would pull aside and have specially trained, as far as how many we would need at this point in time, I don't really know.
Just seems like if you walk into a situation where you're afraid, they can smell your fear.
So understand that we have a rental housing team and a priority housing team, and actually even on zoning, where we could walk into something like that and not even know it's there.
Oh, right.
So, I mean, we have rental housing that does 200, 300 inspections a week, and they're going in apartment complexes. Now, that ordinance says that we would require the property owner to give a certified signed note to allow it to go, take place in apartment complexes, and some of the places that we go, the complex owners don't really care. So, I mean, we could walk into this at any time. I mean, the danger's there. That's the truth. I mean, regardless of what we do, there's a danger there. So I think that that's part of the business. The bulletproof vest came about because of the death of the animal control officer, and the chief at the time felt that we needed that for our own safety, whether we changed the look. I just think that if we're in the field doing inspections, we don't know what's going to happen, and that's just one more safety tool. That's my feeling.
Are they going in pairs, or are they going alone?
Rental housing goes in pairs. Officers, if they're not, if they have a problem property that they're going to, that they know of, they are welcome to take another officer with them. We do not, we allow that. So it's basically according to what your feeling is about a case. I mean, once you went to a case, once you could get a good feel for what is going on there, and if you're not comfortable with that, grab another officer to go with you or call the pop officers and have them go with you.
Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Kennedy, you had a --
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This isn't necessarily for you, Barry, if you want to sit down.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to make some comments on the actual ordinance, and I'm going to come at it from a slightly different angle probably than others, and that's that, so I did not support and did not vote for Proposition 64, not necessarily because I'm an advocate one way or the other about marijuana, I'm fairly agnostic about it. My concerns more are on the readiness of the community and the impacts on the community. I did not feel that as a county supervisor, Sacramento County was ready, and I think that I could probably guess that 50 other counties could probably say the same thing. And the impacts of just doing nothing has not necessarily led us to the right place either. In District Two, we have these huge growhouses, commercial growhouses, illegal growhouses in residential neighborhoods, and that frankly is my biggest concern. And as long as we continue to, in my mind, for lack of a better phrase, bury our head in the sand and pretend that this isn't happening, this isn't coming, it's here and it is coming, and I think that we need to get out ahead of it and not wait until we see what others are doing, because it's here. I've got hundreds of growhouses, some of them yielding $3 million a year in the neighborhoods, and with the ancillary crime that comes with that, I need to get it out of the residential neighborhoods. And in my opinion, the way you do that is by you actually regulate and you actually go after the bad actors. Now, the sheriff's department chief, you guys, you know, I've been out on bus with you guys, and you're doing a great job working with all of the local jurisdictions, including probation, as a joint task force, but they can't keep up with it, and they're not going to be able to with the numbers and the type of crime that's related to this. I think the only way that we really get our arms around this at this point is not to prohibit commercial marijuana activities entirely, but regulate, you know, condition the hell out of them, put them in places where it's appropriate, or I know appropriate's a relative word, but where it's going to have the least amount of impact on the community. Until we do that and make it so that it's not as profitable to do these in neighborhoods, you know, I just don't see the situation getting better in the residences. And then we've got the, you know, the home invasions and wrong properties and innocent people, we've heard all the stories. I don't see that changing if we continue to say no. You know, we have to say, no, not there, if you do it here, and we're going to hit you hard if you do it there. And that's the way I see it. So I don't support the ordinance because I think that a total prohibition on commercial activities rather than highly regulated enforcement of commercial activities, which is, I think, more reasonable, more realistic, and would be more effective in the long run. So for that reason, I think that when Proposition 64 passed, I didn't feel Sacramento County was ready. When this passes, I don't think Sacramento County's ready. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Patrick. Just to follow on, as it relates to, not so much in our comments yet, but questions about the enforcement, maybe Barry, if you could come back up for a second, I wanted to ask about, because as I understand it, you know, we, not as I understand it, we have prohibited outdoor grows, we have a task force that goes after major grows, you know, the clandestine ones, but we have a process that, you know, it may show case closure, but you get, send somebody a letter, and then what they do is they move their plants and they take them somewhere else, and, you know, case closed, they're not there anymore, but obviously if they're in houses, you've got to discover that through, you know, proper methods, and you can't just go busting people's doors down in most cases, and there are protections. But I guess I would ask that, you know, under this ordinance, again, having had the experience we've had, and certainly with you at the helm and your -- helm and your background in code enforcement, you know, we use a civil procedure and process that certainly can have, you know, administrative penalties and fines attached to it that can be pretty hefty. That gets people's attention. But, you know, with changes in law relative to decriminalization and so forth, I get that. But we still have code enforcement officers going out there, and you issue warnings in most cases, or notice that you're in violation, and, you know, that's the process we use. But it can be accelerated to some degree. But could you describe briefly what the process is? Because I think to the point that Supervisor Kennedy made, again, I'm not supportive of, you know, basically saying you can be there and hit them hard there. I'm at the point that you, if they're not allowed, you hit them hard wherever they're at. And, you know, the ability, your ability, both from a budgetary standpoint, but certainly a personnel standpoint, you need to be, you and the others that are part of that enforcement effort, need to be properly supported to allow you to do that. Otherwise, I think what we're talking about is, you know, and Chief Borelji said you hope that we keep it static. But, you know, if static is, and whether you're in District Two, or you're somewhere in District Five, or Three, or Four, or One, you know, corporate area, that we need to be able to, to move, to move swiftly, and certainly with, you know, with due process. But, so I guess if you could explain, because again, as I understand it, particularly with some of the outdoor rural grows, you get to them when you get to them in priority order, and they get noticed, and guess what?
It's a condensed, it's a condensed period of time. We give an advisory, we inspect, we send them a letter saying that we've had a complaint at a chaffa grow. Most of the time those complaints come from the sheriff. There are some that come from constituents, but a lot of them come from the sheriff where they've seen them. We send an advisory letter and say that we're going to inspect in five days. Sometimes we don't get there within five days because of the number. And then we go out, and a lot of them are there, a lot of them are not. A lot of the bigger grows are there because they're huge. So they're there when we get there. And we issue admin penalties, and then they remove them. The sheriff helps us follow up to make sure they remove them. Some of the smaller ones that are in the city, at the height of the enforcement, it takes longer than five days. And then also it has to do with the availability of sheriff. If the sheriff is not available, we don't go out. The officers aren't going to go out to these grows without a sheriff's officer.
So, you know, you give them fair warning. Not all code cases are handled that way. But I guess with marijuana, is the law such that it's treated in a way that that's protected property, that you couldn't show up? And if you've got, you know, where you're prohibited from having an outdoor grow, and you've got 100 of them in the backyard, and I'm talking more maybe indoor, it would be the same thing, is your ability to confiscate, or we just send them a notice and you start fining them?
Excuse me. We don't, we don't confiscate. You know, that's, that's.
And so law enforcement hands it over to you?
No, law enforcement is with us.
Okay. But they, but you said they give you the note and you go out, you send an advisory note?
Yes.
So does law enforcement have to be able to confiscate on the spot?
I can't answer that. I'm not sure.
Because I'm, you know, getting to the root of being effective, you know, it's one, you know, and again, this is not a criticism of law. I'm just, I want to sort this out because it's before us properly, and it goes to about personnel and how you encounter folks and so forth. And if in fact we're going to be serious about it, which I think we are, and, you know, and if we're going to do that, then the process we've used, you can say it's effective in the sense that it, you close the cases and they move on, and either they take their plants and they relocate them, or they, you get them during the fall and they harvest it, and it's, you know, basically money in the, in the bank. Plants are gone, and, you know, and the neighborhood can say, yeah, it's done. But I, but I think if we're going to be effective in this, and there's going to be a cost associated with doing it, you know, financial costs, but there's a cost associated with not doing it. And I guess I would just say that I'm of the opinion that if we're, if we're going to, again, I'd certainly echoing off of Patrick's comments, if we're going to actually be effective and be serious and provide the level of support for code enforcement, the sheriff's standpoint, you know, this is going to just kind of move in marbles around on the table a bit, because that's what happens a lot of times. You go out there and you do your job, but we don't take the plants, they just move them somewhere else, you know. And so they pull up to U-Haul, you've probably been there seeing them do it, you know. And now that transport is not necessarily illegal, I guess, I want to get the sense that, you know, beyond saying you're empowered to do it, and in reality that this, you know, gives you not only the authorities under due process, but also that it has the support personnel and financial wise to actually do it. Because otherwise, you recognize this is a big county, and that, you know, if it's just kind of good enough to go along with it, and I don't think that's the attitude that either of your departments take, but you're also, you know, working in a structure, you have a lot of demands on your, you know, calls for service and so forth. But I guess I'm getting the sense, and, you know, and I've shared this certainly offline, that sending a note during harvest season, say you've got five days or 10 days, you know, either I harvest it if I'm growing it, or I move it, you know. You think I'm going to take those plants and burn them or destroy them? Not happening. And so we're just moving the problem around, I guess.
That's a policy change. I mean, that's, that's our general policy that we use on all.
No, I know, from a code enforcement, which is a softer approach, and I'm not saying that, you know, you're not going to imprison people over the thing. But on the other hand, if you're just moving it around, it's one thing to clean up debris on your property and, you know, haul it away or stack it more neatly so you get, but this, we're talking about serious money and the whole criminal element that falls behind a portion of this, so.
Supervisor Toney, I did ask Chief Borelji to sort of give some assistance when they see grows and plants. What's the sheriff's department's, that's okay at that point.
Well, I think Barry is correct. We do have that period when the time comes to confiscate the plants. If the plants are still there, we are responsible for confiscating those plants and disposing of them. And we will do that. But as Barry said, sometimes there is that five-day grace period in there, which as you pointed out, they do pull them or destroy them or harvest them. And that is a policy change that would be required, as Barry indicated.
So let me just ask you a question. I know Supervisor Peters wants to weigh in. But so, chief and both chiefs here, what's your sense, you get compliance in a lot of cases, but, you know, my sense has been at least anecdotally from people that, you know, that live in the neighborhoods, certainly talking with folks over time, that there's very little, you know, disposal, destruction of it. They either harvest it or they move it. And so basically you're just giving them a notice to move your stuff to somewhere else where we'll have to discover you once again, and/or you harvested, and, you know, we'll see you next season. And I just, and if it's going to be with the hydroponics and so forth, where they really get rooted in, you know, in a way of speaking, certainly in houses and so forth, I mean, you know, the yields, this is a business operation in residential areas, in agricultural residential areas, agricultural communities where it can become very invasive. And I think the whole thing, we've heard from both the district attorney and from, you know, both of you, in one sense or the other, becomes a, you know, a safety issue. And, you know, and so by just giving them notice to move, which in essence it is, policy change or not, I'm not so sure that that's very effective. And maybe that's societally, that's as far as we can go with this. But I guess I'm not convinced that if in fact we're going to deal with it in the neighborhoods, that, you know, just as you pull up to U-Haul and then move it around the corner to another house or to another backyard, that chasing that, you're never going to catch it to any great extent. And so I guess I'm looking for something that's going to be, hopefully provide you more tools and be more effective and provide you the support to do that. So that's my comments. And I guess I'll let Susan weigh in too, because you may have.
As long as you both are there, does whether code goes out or the sheriff goes out depend on who the complainer calls?
No.
No, it does not.
No.
So what, I mean, if I call 311 and I say, there's a guy who's growing dope in a empty house down the street from me, who gets the call?
We do.
Code does.
Code does.
Correct.
So you go out and verify that it's there, then you?
No, we call the sheriff.
You call the sheriff?
Yeah.
So everything starts?
We send out the advisory, the five-day advisory, and then we contact the sheriff. And we have specific days during the week that we go out with them.
Okay.
And then we hit the case.
I think for discussion on policy is whether we're going to send that letter.
Yeah.
Okay. Supervisor Frost, do you have?
I also wanted to know, when you go, assuming this ordinance passes, a person who is growing in a commercial, is that a felony? Or does it, where does it fall on the law enforcement scale?
It's a misdemeanor. Hundred percent. It is not a felony any longer.
Wow. Wow. Is that Prop 47?
It's Prop 6, and.
Always part of 64?
Amory can come up and give you all those particulars on the exact levels of whatnot it is. But it's pretty much 100% misdemeanor crime for marijuana now.
Yeah. Prop 64 reclassified essentially every marijuana-related crime from a felony, from any felony to straight misdemeanor. So not to publicize it, but you could have 100 million pounds of marijuana grown in your backyard, and you can get a misdemeanor for that.
So that's.
Irrespective of your record.
Irrespective of your record.
Record.
Yeah.
Yes.
So if you've been busted five times or 100 times before, it's still a misdemeanor? It isn't a bunch of misdemeanors that collect and you get to a certain number, and then it adds up to something more?
Right. That's Prop 64.
So then that, does that mean that when the sheriff's department goes in, do you destroy the plants?
We will book them for destruction, correct.
But they what?
We will book them for destruction.
Book them for destruction. How often does that happen?
I don't know off the top of my head. I mean, I could gather some stats, but.
Pretty infrequently?
Yeah. No, more often than not, we actually book quite a few plants.
Do you?
Yeah. There are a lot of times, there are a lot of times when we come back for the five-day period or whatever, the plants are completely gone.
Yeah, I would say, I have a neighbor, a couple doors down, who, somebody called on them, and they were growing in their backyard. And sheriff's deputy came by and said, I'll be back in a couple of days, whatever, or was, and we need to get that out of there. And it was gone.
Oh, yeah, it works. And they move it in a lot of cases, so. Okay.
Thank you.
Supervisor Frost, I don't know if you had questions for?
I guess I just wanted to say, if you know you're calling on marijuana, why send code enforcement? If code enforcement needs backup with sheriff, why not just send sheriff? But I guess you don't always know you're going, so that could be a bad question.
Well, when we, when we actually get a complaint ding with that, we, we would, we'd go with the sheriff.
You would just have sheriff go out?
Yeah, we would go with the sheriff.
You'd go with the sheriff?
We would go with the sheriff, yes.
But why not just send the sheriff if?
Can't answer that question.
If you're duplicating efforts, it seems like.
Well, other than it's in the zoning code, and it's code enforcement that forces the zoning code.
That's something to look at.
Yeah.
I think we need to talk about that.
Yes, I agree. I agree. Take a, take a look at this aspect.
The process of following up.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm ready to move the item.
All right. Okay, we have a motion. Any other comments by board members? If not? Okay, we have a motion to approve. Okay, it's moved in second then to approve the ordinance. Introduce, this will be the introduction of the ordinance, is that correct, Flo?
Yes.
Okay. This is first reading, come back to us in two weeks.
Adoption, yes.
Okay. All right. So to introduce it, and then bring it back in two weeks. And you'll bring back with regards to discussion, take a look at it, you'll come back at a future date on that, so.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. All right. Nothing further than please vote.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Kennedy voting no, and Supervisor Serna is absent.
Right.
And we, we do need to adopt the zoning code component.
Was that bundled in the?
I thought it was in the.
It was staff recommendation.
Okay, yeah, good.
So just for record that the motion included, moved staff recommendation, including the ordinance.
Thank you.
Introduction as well. Good, good point for clarification. Okay. And I just would note that I know Supervisor Serna also wanted to be sure that, I think I noted, he was out of town, but he is on county business, and he's traveled to Mexico. And I wanted to be sure to, make sure that was clearly reflected in the record, so. Okay. With that then, that takes that item, and we'll see it back on consent calendar in a couple of weeks. Okay, any other, we do have a couple of adjournments, but any other items on the agenda that we need to come back to?
No.
Okay.
You're just down to your supervisor comments and CEO comments.
All right, let's go to CEO comments.
I had two comments. One is I wanted to draw your attention to item 84, which is a receiving file. It's on SHRA, on our January 31st, yeah, January 31st meeting. I forgot that date. There were 11 items that Supervisor Kennedy had asked for us to come back and report.
Only 11?
Only 11.
That was a condensed version.
You talked longer than 11.
We condensed them. What you have in front of you is a status report on those items. The big one that is still pending is the first item that we listed was on how the JPA that we have for SHRA, what are the options that are available to this board on, do we dissolve the JPA? Do we have a hybrid JPA? Where do we take that product, which is SHRA? And again, as a reminder, the question, the discussion there is basically since the R is gone, redevelopment is not part of that. So we are working on that item with SHRA Executive Director and staff. And our plan is to come back to you in May and give you a status update on what options the board has. I just want to make sure that you were aware and that you knew that that's what that item was about.
Okay, thank you.
Also wanted to just let, let the board members know and viewers know that on April 25th, we have two items that I wanted to spotlight. First one is we're going to recognize the volunteers, which is in the morning at 10:00 a.m. So just want to make sure everybody knew about that. And the second one is more on the fiscal side. At 2:30 p.m., we are slated to present to you a monthly rate increase in Sacramento County Water Agency. Just want to make sure that the supervisors knew that that item is coming to you that afternoon.
Looking forward to that one.
And that's all I have.
I just would note on that, that I've talked with Michael Peterson in my briefing, but you need to have the historical rate increase, which I'm sure they will have attached. But for benefit of us all, and certainly the public that's viewing, but I think recognizing, you know, certainly what's going to be requested of us. But secondly, kind of where we came from, and, you know, some of the associated costs. I know that'll be bundled in the staff report, but it's important that be charted out going back, I believe, 10 years to see where we've been. There's significant increases over the past decade.
And the other thing that we have incorporated in there, and we'll make sure that you see it, is also all the other municipal utilities, what their rates are. So you have a total aggregate what the bill looks like.
And I guess I would just offer one other suggestion, that they're going to make their request based upon what they believe they need as a bottom line. I would suggest that, you know, you and or Rob or Michael be prepared that if, you know, depending upon what this board, whether we embrace it at all. But, you know, if something less than, you know, what are the priorities within that list? Because it includes staffing and capital projects. I referenced this morning in some of my comments about the capital improvement program. Again, they have, you know, responsibility to bring it to us. But I do think that we need to have some potential options available to us should we consider doing something less than that, and how that plays itself out, so.
Got it.
Thanks. Okay. Board member comments before we get to adjournments?
Yeah, just a real quick one. I want to wish the best of luck to Patty Gillett, the NCEA National Championships in Waco.
Thank you.
All right, very good. All right. Any other comments before adjournments? Ms. Frost? Okay, I have none. Ms. Peters in, we have an adjournment.
Thank you. I'd like to adjourn tonight in memory of Roger Brinkenpass. Last month, the communities of Carmichael and Fair Oaks lost a dedicated leader and a strong supporter of law enforcement with the passing of Roger. He lived in West Fair Oaks, which is part of the Carmichael Recreation Park District, and have many fond memories of him. One of my first, my first encounter with him actually was involving the vacant lot on Palm Avenue that said, "Future Park Site." It had been there for more than 40 years. And he questioned me when we first met, Robert, are you ever going to build a park there? And I told him we would. And amazingly enough, was able to keep that promise. In 2008, we dedicated Patriots Park. With his help and that of the Carmichael Park District, we crafted a pretty unique deal out there. Every year now, a ceremony is held at that park honoring fallen heroes with a connection to the area who served in the Armed Forces, Law Enforcement, and Fire Safety. And Roger was always there. And I will really miss not seeing him at this year's ceremony. He was very active and an integral part of the West Fair Oaks Neighborhood Watch. And on National Night Out, he hosted probably the most popular gathering in the Sheriff's North Division, because he smoked his own meats, and he served, smoked meat and southern-style barbecue. And towards the end of National Night Out, all the, we had a big crowd of deputies and chiefs from the Sheriff's Department there. It was delicious food, and he, it was, he was very popular. He was a regular attendee at the Fair Oaks Community Coffee Meetings in my district and knew everyone there. So I'm going to miss seeing him at those meetings also. And Roger believed in community and was also an active, engaged citizen, a good example for all. And it's only fitting that we adjourn today in his memory.
Very good. If there's no other adjournments then, and bringing.